Good evening. Welcome to the Monday, June 25th Council Committee Work Session. We have two items this evening. We're going to start off with ID 0231, Citywide Strategic Plan with David Fujimoto, our Sustainability Director, and Brian Douglas, our Consultant.
Good evening, Councilmembers. Again, David Fujimoto, Director of Sustainability with the city, just here to make a quick introduction to Brian Scott, who's a consultant with us, working with us on from BDS Planning, and also Gabriel Silberblatt, who's part of our project team, and Megan Curtis Murphy, who's also part of our project team and works with our department. We're here tonight, as outlined in the staff memo, to get some direction and some feedback from City Council at this critical juncture in our strategic planning effort. We've done a wide range of engagement activities, seeking input from the community. We had over 1,300 responses. We also had a community planning charrette earlier this month, some intervening meetings with project leadership team, which included council president and deputy president, as well as some input that we received through the city's Peak Democracy Platform. All of that has kind of fed into some feedback that we received, and Brian's going to go into more detail about the process of getting here, but I just wanted to kind of put an exclamation mark on the -- the hope is to get some feedback on the five draft strategic priority areas, because that will allow us to proceed to the next step of developing goals or goals, objectives, and actions. So with that, I'll turn it over to Brian.
Brian Scott with BDS Planning, and as David said, I'm here to kind of walk you through the strategic planning process to date and share with you a lot of the findings we've had and get your feedback on a number of items related to that and related to the vision, mission, guiding principles, and particularly the strategic priorities. So I want to touch on the plan components and the process update, and then I want to share with you draft, vision, mission, and guiding principles for your review and input. We're not asking you to approve those tonight, but we want to check out that we're on the right direction and any suggestions that you have. We also want to discuss the strategic priorities as suggested by the community input, the charrette, as well as some draft goal statements and elements of those, and we'll have a discussion about those. And then before we're done, we want to get your approval on the strategic priorities, in particular, just basically as categories, because then we're going to assign a work group to each of those priorities. So we want to make sure we've got the right things that -- we'll get the work groups working on the right thing. That's the key action item for tonight, and then we'll take a moment at the end to just sort of review and reflect on where we are. So the components of a strategic plan, a lot of people -- the strategic plan is used often, but I think they're pretty typically, a strategic plan has several key elements. First, it starts with a vision, mission, and guiding principles, which we often call purpose statements. It says, "Who are we? What are we trying to accomplish? And how are we going to behave while we're doing it?" And then a strategic plan identifies a number of strategic priorities, and as I say, that's a key element tonight, and each strategic priority typically has a goal associated with it. And then each goal has a number of objectives with specific actions and targets that you're trying to get to. And those are the key elements of most strategic plans and the way we're designing this one. And today, we want to get -- have a discussion on the vision, mission, and guiding principles, and on the strategic priorities and draft goals. We're not going to get into a discussion on the objectives or targets at this point. That'll come later. So quick update on the process. I've shared this process with you at previous meetings. It has basically three steps. Phase one is defining who we are and kind of what we're all about. The second phase is defining where we want to go, and then the third phase is specifically, how are we going to get there? Where we are today is right at the end of that first phase. In fact, with your agreement on a set of strategic priorities, we'll basically say we're done with that first phase, where we got a lot of community input, identify who we are, what are the key priority areas. And then through the second phase, we'll have one work group for each of the strategic priorities to develop objectives and action strategies, and then vet those with the community. And then the final stage, we will be working on just specifically implementation. How does the city need to change that what it does day-to-day in order to move forward on those goals and objectives? Make sense so far? So the community engagement, I think all of you were with us at the charrette, so kind of doing a quick review here. You've heard most of this before. We did an online survey. As David mentioned, we had more than 1,300 responses to that. We did a number of focus groups facilitated by the consulting team. We had what we called community pop-ups, which were like a booth or a table at various community events where folks could give us feedback to similar questions as the online survey. And then we made available basically the focus group materials for anybody that wanted to have their own meeting, which we called Meetings in a Box, and we had quite a lot of those filled out as well. We heard a lot of things through that process, but some sort of headline indicators were on sort of guiding principle sort of questions. People in Issaquah really value the small-town identity, sense of community, and a passion for the natural environment were key themes as key principles. Challenges, far and away, the top feedback on challenges was about controlling development or the challenge being maybe we weren't controlling development as much as we could and mitigating traffic were big, big headline issues. There was also a variety of comments about the effectiveness of city governance. On vision or where do we want to go, comments about improving the transportation infrastructure, managing growth, and retaining Issaquah's identity were key themes that came from that. We also, as an input to the process, asked Echo Northwest to review the city's existing reports and data, as well as interview some of the city's department heads, and then use their own experience to identify what are some key things that Issaquah would want to pay attention to in strategic planning. Their analysis identified four external forces that Issaquah should be responding to, like most other city governments, and those are economic growth and urbanization. Certainly, a lot of both of those happening in the Puget Sound in this era, and Issaquah is feeling as much pressure from that as everybody else. Technology is changing all of our lives, and it's also changing the way you run an organization, and city governments are no exception. And so keeping up with technological advances is a key thing for managing an effective organization. And then fiscal pressure as budgets are developing and infrastructure needs are required. It's putting -- most municipal governments are facing fiscal pressure to keep those things together. And then environmental issues are increasingly becoming a challenge for city governments across Washington and across the world on environmental issues are coming up. More specific to Issaquah uniquely and based on your own information, three key areas came up: growth and development, environmental quality, and city governance. Not too different than some of the things that the citizens said. Growth and development is about the type, location, and pattern of development, ensuring affordable housing, and managing transportation. Environmental quality is about citizen expectations of what of environmental quality, keeping up with water quality, and managing future growth, keeping up with that. And then city government or governance involved interdepartmental collaboration, council staff coordination on key policy issues, and we'll address those further later on. So then we had this strategic plan charrette in which we had something like 80 people that were -- that came together to discuss those strategic priorities and kind of react to everything that I just said. And we got a ton of input at that meeting, and we put out there some categories that we thought the strategic plan might -- the input we got might fall into. And we got a lot of feedback during that process, and after that feedback, we modified the categories a little bit. We didn't modify the number of them, but the titles we gave them changed a little bit. And so the strategic priorities we'll be proposing tonight for discussion are growth and development, mobility, infrastructure, environmental stewardship, and city leadership and services. Clearly, the first four kind of being substantive issues that on the citizens' minds, particularly growth and development, mobility, and environmental stewardship. Infrastructure is sort of a combination of citizen input and reality of the municipal corporation. And then city leadership and services is both kind of community demand and need to manage the organization. After the -- again, after the charrette, we put this out there and put it out on the Peak Democracy website, got several hundred responses to that, and I'll share those in a moment. We also -- there's been some feedback sort of informally through the Chamber of Commerce and some individual emails, and a question about where does a prosperous economy or business growth fit into this structure? And it seems to us just that it's there. It says, you know, under growth and development, we've got new and existing businesses, and it might be that we want to make sure that we're acknowledging that growth and development isn't just constraining or managing that, but it's also making sure we do have appropriate economic growth. So that would be a home for that issue that some asked a question about. So everybody with me so far, and kind of we're going to have a discussion of these. I just want to make sure everybody's kind of with me and where they came from. So then moving into the purpose statements, the vision, mission, guiding principles, which are, I think, the foundation of any strategic plan, and Issaquah already has these statements, but strategic planning is a great time to kind of revisit those statements and say, "Are they appropriate?" And we think this process and the input we've had to date, as well as input from staff and council leadership as a sort of debrief on the charrette, some suggestions to updates on these that I'd love to hear your feedback on if you think we're on the right direction. Again, showing them to you the first time tonight, don't think we're going to try and adopt them, but we'd love to have your feedback, and Gabriel will take notes while we're talking about that. So what, first of all, what is a vision statement? It's an overarching statement that describes where you want the organization to be in the future. So it's a vision out there about where we want to go. It's not so much a description of who we are today, and actually that in some of the discussion about this statement, that was one of the key questions. A vision statement should define an optional desired future state and help ask or answer the question, "Where do we want to go? And what do we want to be?" Some vision statements are lofty and aspirational. Some are more sort of practical and quantitative. That's kind of a stylistic preference, but it's basically describing not who you are, but where you want it, where you want to get to. Issaquah has an existing vision statement, which is Issaquah is the best community to invest your future. Kind of a sort of positive statement about kind of a brand perhaps, or about sort of a thing you want to say about Issaquah, but in very specific. This process, input from the community, discussion amongst all of those groups that I described suggest perhaps a proposed vision would be Issaquah is a unique and welcoming community, rich with history, and a passion for the natural environment. Fair amount of discussion about this. I took a shot at drafting this before the charrette. We put it up there in front of the community, got a lot of reactions from some of you. We discussed it with staff and council leadership after the charrette. That's where we came to this. It seemed like unique was important, welcoming was important, community was important, history was important as distinguishing Issaquah from other communities in the area. You have a lot of history. And as really evidenced by this process, you have a passion for the natural environment, and people care about it a lot. So that's kind of it was kind of every word chosen pretty carefully. Thoughts, reactions, right track, run track? Yes?
Can you go back a couple slides?
Sure.
Right there. Now, your emphasis is a future state. Where do we want to go in the future? Where do we -- what do we want to be in the future? And my first reaction to this statement that you propose is it sounds like you're describing today.
Okay.
And I'm not, and I didn't feel like it is inspiring or calling anybody to anything beyond what we may view ourselves as being already today.
Okay. And so you would rewrite the statement to be more, "We want to be a unique and welcoming community, rich with history," and et cetera? Or do you want to state something beyond that?
In terms of what you want a vision statement to be, I do agree with that. I would prefer that it be aspirational, right? And you can, and since you kind of teed it up that way, it's like, okay, maybe we're not welcoming today, maybe we're not rich in history, maybe we don't have passion. Well, I don't think any of those things are true. So all I can say is that that didn't seem consistent with kind of the setup you had in the previous one.
Fair point.
That's really, that's just, that's my point.
Okay.
I have one other comment, I think a little bit similar, which is with the passion for the natural environment, I do think that is true. That's been evidenced by a lot of community input and a lot of surveys of the community that there is, there is existing passion for the natural environment. And I think parallel to that, we also have a beautiful, unique, natural setting, and that is something that in the future, there is the possibility that, I mean, that's one thing that we, I think, need to preserve going forwards. And so for me, part of the proposed vision being that natural setting would be important. And right now, it's about the passion that people feel for the natural environment, but actually preserving that natural setting.
That's a great comment. So it might be actually that kind of knits both of those together is one of, I mean, you got to, it's kind of you got a good thing going, and we don't want to mess it up. And so it's not just that we're passionate about it, but we're going to, our vision is we will succeed at protecting that natural. That's a good, that's a nice comment. Others?
Thank you. The, so proposed, so visions, are they typically passive? Because this was in the, like, a passive tense, Issaquah is. So I don't know the answer to that, because I haven't.
It varies a lot, one community to the next. One possible edit to the first comment would be just saying Issaquah strives to be, and then leave the rest of the statement the same. But then I thought it was an interesting thing to say. In fact, we understand that our natural setting might be a risk, and we're passionate about protecting that. That would be, that would be a possible, that seems rational to me based on what I kind of understand about the community.
It seems to me that there are some important elements missing that we think are special about our community, the people who live here in particular, the citizens, and I don't know exactly how to add that. I would have to think about it.
Okay. So just making sure that people feel included in it?
Yeah.
All right.
Councilmember Ramos?
Yeah, as we're getting onto that future look, and the fear that I think a lot of Puget Sound has right now is that we're going to lose a lot of our socioeconomic particularly diversity.
Yep.
Because as things get priced out and people move out, and all of a sudden, you have a very, you lose that diversity. And so that's where I'm saying that vision of, you're talking about reaching out is to somehow, and I don't know where I'm going with this, but that's the thing we want to be able to not just maintain some of the we have, but expand on that more so. That'd be more of a vision for me to somehow maintain those different diversity or expand on those.
Expand it. Okay.
Councilmember Batiste?
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up a little bit after Councilmember Hunt's comment about preserving the natural environment. I started to look at all of those pieces that it's a unique and welcoming community, which really gets a little bit to your point as well, and our history, and the passion for the natural environment. And I wonder if preserving is something that we would want to talk about in regard to all of those things and not just the natural environment? Because I could see looking at preserving pieces of our, pieces that have to do with history and, you know, preserving that unique and welcoming community in the future. So I'm not exactly sure where I'm going with that either, but.
I'm hearing, I'm hearing a sense of you all think you got a good thing going, and you don't want to mess it up.
Okay, thank you. Good comments. Thanks to them all. And actually, when Bill made his comments, actually, something new popped into my mind in that, again, as you tee this up to be aspirational, I think Bill touched upon something which I realize, you know, there may be some type of threats out there that we need to have some awareness of. And if we don't strive to, and perhaps it is preserve diversity, or there's some way of saying that, but it, to me, that's also a call that there are forces at play, especially in the economy and what they do to housing prices in particular. And I think that'll be, I mean, to me, the, if there's a, there's a chance to change Issaquah in the future, if there's a force at play right now to change, is the inability for our children to inherit Issaquah because they can't afford to get their own townhouse to get started, let alone a home, a single-family home. And that's so the, so the richness of the economy regionally, it's, and all that's happening regionally is a threat in that way. And a vision to that says, and I think you just said it too, we think we have something good, let's preserve. But I like that idea of, you know, but there's also a little bit of protect.
Yep.
Preserve means protect. And this is definitely, I think, would be a threat to families when, when, you know, our children just, they can't, if they wanted to, they couldn't because they couldn't afford it. That was one comment. And another one, and I wanted to add on to what Vicki said, I felt for a while, and I, actually, I do like its preserve, but, and this is very vision, looking forward. When I walk outside in any type of park forest, whether it be on the hills or just within, in on the Valley Forge, one of the things I'm keenly aware of is that it used to be that it was all large, old-growth, virgin forest around here. And if we do things right, we'll have that again. That's, I mean, that, that's a couple centuries in the future. But it does take planning and a very deliberate effort on a lot of people's part for a long time to just give the time for the trees and the environment. There's a lot of restoration that's going on in Lake Samaun State Park right now, the restoration they're doing at that stream. If you go there now, it doesn't look anything like the forest it's going to be, but that's very, that's very deliberate. And so this, it's one thing to protect, but to be aspirational, I think, you know, as good stewards to this land as well, where we live, you know, we can help bring about, and with the help of future generations, kind of a recreation of a natural environment that was here even before settlers came here.
So excusing for a second the bad language sequence that's going to come out as I make this statement up, as it's coming out of my mouth, would you want to say something like Issaquah intends to leave our children and grandchildren a community that is as unique and welcoming and rich in history and passionate about the natural environment as we are today?
So to me, you're moving there.
I mean, I acknowledge that was a terrible mouthful of words, but I was trying to get a concept out.
So, you know, I think one of the things this evening is to get a sense of the body and get some feedback. I don't know if we are intending to try to define and, and give a particular thumbs up on particular language. So what I'd like to do is sort of give all this feedback and have you mull it over and then think about it, unless, unless somebody wants to move, that we try to specifically wordsmith it tonight. And I'm not seeing anybody.
I guess in.
Out of your head? No? Okay.
I guess in my attempt to say that, I was trying, it's, I was trying to pick up on, it seems to me that there, the theme I'm hearing from all of you together, I think, is protecting this thing we got going that is kind of all these pieces and leaving it for our kids and our grandchildren is kind of, kind of what I was hearing as a message kind of in general that, that is a little lacking in this statement. And I'm just, I, I agree that we should take, to come back and come back to you with a statement.
Councilmember Ramos?
Yeah, I guess I want a little more visioning than protecting.
Okay.
Because if you're just protecting is, you have what you have, and that's just, you're just trying to hang on to that. And that's not a vision to me. That's just a status quo. So if you want to do something, I, what I was saying, the threats that we have, kind of like a swan out, is what are the threats that are going to change those things that we have? And how are we going to actually get back to something different? I really like the idea of that long-term ecosystem management of, yes, we're preserving some open spaces, but what are we going to manage them into? As an old forester, I'm going to look at a 250-year rotation of how you get that, that forest to, back to another status. That's a vision. That's just not leaving the hillside alone, let it do what it wants to do. Actually going and trying to work back to some of the things that were at one time that were, we think were better. So.
There's a nurturing element to that.
But it's like expand and create something better than what is now. San Francisco is now protecting. I want more than that.
So I'll add, so thought I have in having this conversation is around Tolstoy's comment that happy families are all alike, and so happy cities are sort of all alike. And some of what we're talking about are the fundamental elements of what you would hope any community on the east side would have, right? You would have, you would hope you would have a breadth of housing and a breadth of recreational opportunities and a breadth of retail opportunities and a, you know, healthy business environment. I do think about what in our vision is unique to Issaquah. And so, you know, I think having some of the response to what we're seeing as sort of threats to what our city is, I get it, and I, and I, I'm not opposed to trying to figure out how to say that. But I also think this thing about focusing on history and the natural environment, I actually, I actually sort of like, because I think in terms of like, why do I live in Issaquah, right? Why, why don't I live in Redmond? Why don't I live in Kirkland? And those are two of the, two of the things that are why I live here. So, so, which is, again, not to say we shouldn't try to figure out how to respond to, you know, something in our vision that responds to these big, long-term, you know, this area is likely to be, you know, growing in challenging ways for as long as we're all going to live here, and having a vision that responds to that, that I think is great. But I also think I, these are, these are a big part of why I live here and what makes us different from all those other cities.
This has been great feedback. I'd suggest we move on. We've got several other things to talk about, I feel like.
Tola?
Oh, sorry, Councilmember Goodman?
I think one of the, you're talking about like other cities, it doesn't quite speak to me in terms of, if it's in the future, it almost seems to me like I want to be able to acknowledge what we are going through to get to that wonderful future state that we're talking about in the vision. So, and these aren't the right words, and I don't exactly know what to do, but some sort of, we're not going to be the community that we were. And this almost sounds to me like we're just going to stay the same. And because of all the change that we're, that we're undergoing, in a lot of, in a lot of ways, we can't stay the same. But there are certain elements that we want to preserve that we've been talking about. So some sort of acknowledgement about change, evolution, while not losing what was so special to us.
As we grow and change, as we evolve, Issaquah strives to.
Yeah, that doesn't, I mean, we're not going to, that doesn't do it for me, but we're not going to wordsmith it, and I'm the kind.
But something acknowledging that a lot of change is going to happen, you're not just sort of putting a jar over it and protecting it.
Right. So that's, I think that part's missing for me.
Okay. Good. Go forward. All right. So mission statement. Mission statement is an organizational purpose that defines who you are, your products, services, customers, and overall strengths. While the vision is about where you want to go, the mission is about who you are and what you do. A good mission statement is the basis for decision-making within the organization. Everyone should understand it, because you're going to ask your employees to follow it and your citizens to understand it. A good mission statement describes what you do, why your organization exists, they're straightforward, intended to be enduring. You don't have a different mission year by year. You don't have a different mission year by year. It's basically, it describes who you are. Mission statement should include two elements, the business, what the organization does, and the purpose, the ultimate result the organization is trying to achieve. So that's kind of the theory on what a mission statement is all about. You have an existing mission statement for the city of Issaquah. It engages the public and provides quality services to support a sustainable, safe, and vibrant community. And as I was considering all of the input that we'd received and the feedback from the charrette and everything else, it seemed to me that statement was not bad, but maybe could be a little more sort of straightforward. And so suggesting a slight edit, which seemed to resonate well with staff and council leadership, was that the city of Issaquah provides effective stewardship and public services to ensure a livable, safe, vibrant, and inclusive community. Reactions to that or thoughts?
What's the purpose of the word effective?
I think, I think that you were successful in providing stewardship and public services, that you weren't squandering public resources, but you were making efficient and effective use of them. I think that was the intent, but it's, it's your statement.
I guess that my first reaction was effective and whether it should be something more like high quality.
Oh, councilmember Batiste and then councilmember Ramos?
I, I was actually just going to, when we were, we were talking a little bit about that and there were, there was a lot of discussion around the adjectives and then being able to, if you use the word high quality, how, how does one person define that compared with another person? And so I think there were a lot of adjectives that were being used during that part of the discussion. I was just trying to give you a little bit of feedback on effective. And then landing on effective seemed to be where we landed, based on what we talked about.
Thank you. It just seems like effective is a very low bar. Okay, so we build people for water, that's effective.
Could say outstanding. I think there was some discussion, I think maybe even in the first draft of this, I said outstanding or something like that. And, and there was some discussion of, you know, in, in the age of limited resources and challenges, you know, that may not be actually making a, it might not, you might not be able to deliver on that in the way you'd like to. And so I think there was a certain amount of, let's, let's be reasonable and not set the bar higher than we can meet. So that, that was, I think that was part of picking that word.
Councilmember Ramos? Other thoughts?
Sounds like this, this one's close. All right, moving on to guiding principles. Guiding principles are central tenants of what an organization is willing and not willing to do in support of its constituents. So basically, this is how you're going to say, do we do this? Do we not do this? How are we going to behave as we are carrying out our mission in pursuit of our vision? Guiding principles identify the manner in which the organization will carry out its mission. Issaquah currently has four guiding principles, environmental stewardship, people-oriented, economic prosperity, and service excellence. I would say on reflection of all the input we received and stuff, those seem to me to be not bad. They're kind of in the right category. I put some energy into trying to think of ways to make them a little more streamlined, easier to kind of roll off your tongue. And then you had these descriptions of them that I remember reading them all aloud during the charrette and it kind of sounded like I'd just read the whole strategic plan from front to back because there's just a lot of words there. Kind of, all of the words are kind of nice, but it's just, it's like a whole lot and it'd be hard to remember. So I made a suggestion about streamlining the categories here and tightening up the language. Again, this has been edited by staff and council leadership for your consideration tonight. So suggesting five guiding principles, people, environment, community prosperity, service excellence, and equity. People being, we foster community pride, strong and safe neighborhoods, and diverse opportunities. It's about the people. Environment, we are effective stewards of our natural environment to ensure a sustainable legacy for future generations. Community prosperity, we sustain a great place to live and work with a supportive business climate, civic culture, and transportation system. Service excellence, we provide responsive, efficient, and effective public services for residents and businesses. And equity, we ensure that Issaquah's services and outstanding quality of life are accessible to everyone. And a lot of churn on this with staff and council leadership to try and kind of pull these pieces together. And as I think about some of the feedback we got from Peak Democracy, it seemed like it sort of picked up on, on some of these things and there's sort of a place for some of those things. But your reactions to these as guiding principles?
Councilmember Goodman?
Thanks. I think that's a really good job of reducing the number of words down. And I, I think I really like what I'm reading. I think the only difference I would make is the "we" at the front of each one. I think I might change everyone to say fostering community pride. I don't know how effective, I still don't like effective, but anyway, sustaining a great place to work, providing responsive, ensuring. But I would just take the "we's" off. Other than that, I'm, it looks pretty good.
Okay.
I'll add to that. I, I like that. I like leading with the verb. I think environment, then you have to say steward our natural environment to ensure a sustainable legacy for future generations. Again, not that we have to fully wordsmith it tonight, but leading with verbs is always.
All right.
We are a city of action. Other thoughts? Councilmember Winterstein?
You started some of your comments. You did mention some of the feedback that we've gotten. You mentioned the chamber and some other communications as well. And, and I had kind of been in that place. I had been at a, a chamber board meeting Friday or a week ago Friday. And that, that kind of comment, that came up there. And it caused me to go back and look. Interned city administrator Emily Moon was there. And you made a comment about, well, you know, economic vitality maybe could be, have elements in some of these, I think what we're going to get to a little bit. But, and, and I actually agreed with that comment. I think, I think, gosh, these five categories, which we're going to get to in a little bit, I guess, were, there was, there was something missing there. I think that was, and community prosperity, this proposal that you have is, I think, does a good job of, but, but, or maybe I should, my real question is for you, how much of this reflects some of what your comments and earlier, some of these additional comments we got, especially about economic vitality?
So the way we got to the words that are on the screen here was I looked at the existing statements and at all of the input that we'd received so far through the charrette and proposed some streamlining. I had a few less words. I had, I had five buckets, but I had, every one of them was one word. And I proposed some language. And then we had a work session with staff and council leadership. And we kicked, actually, we worked on this slide more than anything else we worked on that day. We, we kind of struggled with it. And some of the sort of constructs of we, I think, I think maybe like community prosperity, I remember we spent a lot of time coming up with that, the way that was presented and the way these things are there. And then after that meeting, staff put, David and Megan, correct me if I'm not getting this right, after that meeting, this stuff all went into Peak Democracy. And, and the comments you received were in reaction to that going out. Is that right? Or was it an earlier version that went out?
The comments and people were primarily.
Around the, so that, so these principles weren't presented? Okay, so, you know, as I was reading them just now, I was thinking, God, these actually are kind of responsive to that comment. But I, I couldn't quite remember where it was all coming through.
So I'll give you, I'll give you a little bit of background, at least my, my frame of reference. So when I got here and, and when I moved here, there was Lewis Hardware, but there also was a coast-to-coast hardware in the building where Gold's Gym is now. And there's been three or four businesses in that location since then. And, and there may have been another hardware store somewhere in town. And when coast-to-coast, another one closed down and we only had Lewis over here, it was, it was like, my gosh. You do have to travel out of town if you, if you needed to get something from a hardware store if you're doing any type of home improvement project or what have you. Now, you can look at today and say, well, that's changed, you know, with, we actually have some big box hardware. We, and we've lost our small, little hardware store, but from a, which is unfortunate. But from a, from a, from a kind of livability, which we have up there earlier, you know, this is just one example that, you know, Issaquah is providing through the businesses are here. And I'm, again, just talking about hardware. I could talk about food establishments, restaurants, for example. I could talk about various forms of entertainment, a lot of different things. But I just, this one on hardware, is that, you know, my needs are being met better than before that, that is here. And, and, and I think there's something about the, the business climate, the businesses that are here that are providing services to are here locally, which, so they're not exporting jobs. I think this, there's, there's the idea of a business climate where an organization could set up shop here and operate, have their headquarters here or what have you. And whatever product or service they have, it might be exported somewhere else. It could be software and it goes around the world, or it could be a Costco and they get retail around the world. But then there's those businesses that are actually providing the services. And we're talking about, we're talking about legal and medical and many other things, as well as, you know, food and, and hardware, for example. And, and, you know, as I think, I think the, as, and I, I think what Stacy said earlier about kind of capturing this change that we're going through and have been going through and will continue to go through, you know, as a community, as a balanced community, there would be jobs, more jobs of that sort that, you know, pay a little bit higher because the value they bring to the marketplace is something that can be exported. And there's a larger, perhaps worldwide, global marketplace for this business. But then there's those here that maybe our kids are getting their first job at or something that'll help me with some type of improvement on my home where, so they're, they're, what they're exporting, they're not exporting it out of town, it's all right here. And so I, I feel that that's, you know, in an ideal world, we'd have the right balance of both of those. And there's a lot of ramifications on having a business climate and jobs to, if it was that rich, as I just described. So all of that to say, supportive business climate is, just feels, and maybe we're going to get it, maybe we have to capture it somewhere else, somewhere else. But it feels short of that aspiration. And, 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 and I don't, so I, that's just a lot of words to kind of give you the focus on that one part. You had mentioned it earlier and I think we've got some pretty good.
So sort of the local business, nurturing business, kind of, kind of a thing that's a little more just, not just, we'll give you your permit fast, but actually, we're trying to grow something that, that provides, I'm just, I'm not even sure where it goes. I'm just trying to make sure I'm capturing your thought.
There was another element to this and I'll just share this point. When, right in vicinity, right behind us here, we had a neighborhood food market. And we don't have that now.
Yeah.
In the future, we envision there being, especially in the central area, kind of a more density and more people living down there. And frankly, the proximity to where those people live are going to, and even those that are here now, such as in this very neighborhood, the proximity to a food market is actually a big factor in the quality of life that they have. And, and, so, so that's about actually helping a community actually be the best it can be.
It's like community supporting businesses and it's, it's kind of the back and forth, the, the resonance between resonance between business and community and kind of nurturing, mutually nurturing each other.
You said the word nurturing three times now, and I'm not sure that's the right word, but because it feels like we're doing more than, than maybe we are or can. But again, if I think about that future state, that's really good, right? You know, the, the immediate services that most people need are at hand, are critical in their quality. And they're meeting their day-to-day needs. And yet, and they also potentially have that household source of income, a job here locally as well, which may be a different business of a different type. And so just supportive business climate is, as I, as, as I, as just a phrase within a guiding principle, it just still feels a little short.
As I, as I'm thinking about it, I think, I think what you're saying and the title of community prosperity, actually, that's pretty well linked to the folks that did that. And it's really just that phrase of supportive business climate doesn't quite get to it. And somehow that, because it's, we sustain a great place to live and work is, also feels like it connects pretty well with what you're saying. But then it's, there's a, there's that resonance.
I agree with the community prosperity as a guiding principle title. I, that does resonate with what my point.
Okay.
Councilmember Batiste?
So I, I was just to follow up on what Paul is talking about. We, we start, I know originally, we started with the word prosperity and that seemed like that was falling short. But, but earlier, in prior years, it was economic prosperity. And now we have it as community prosperity, which I really like. I really like having that full, that it's the prosperity of the whole community, which means a lot of different things. But when we made that move over, then we just left it with a supportive business climate. And I would say that that does seem, now that I'm thinking about it and looking at it again, I think that that does not seem to capture what we would want to say about a stable or robust economy. And I guess when I pop back up and look at the mission, I feel like we've captured just about everything that we have under the guiding principles in some way, but we don't say anything about the economy or jobs. So I, I really like community prosperity, but I think we just need to have more, more language in there about the economy.
Okay.
Councilmember Ramos?
Basically agree. And I'm just thinking that we have a, an economic vitality commission for this city. And so we, we, just those words there that we want to have, you know, vitality in our economic structure. And I'm not saying those are words, but that, to me, is, is more active than, than a good business climate. They're actually doing things to, you know, reach out to businesses, to do stuff, to build those, those things. It's, it's an active role.
Okay.
First, councilmember Goodman?
I've already gone, so you can let.
Okay. Councilmember Hunt?
I think one, one concept that has a place somewhere in the guiding principles is being proactive. And the one that stands out for me is where it says, we provide responsive, efficient, and effective public services for residents and businesses under service excellence. I think that that is, all of those things are necessary. And I think they are, they are descriptive of service excellence. But I also think there's the component of being forward-thinking and being more proactive.
Proactive, all right.
So I'll, I'm in for a first time. So I think this issue of how we talk about business is going to get more pronounced. You know, skipping ahead just a second as we get into draft goals, because I think this issue around what we've defined for this, this, what people are talking about, about this strong connection with our businesses, I think is even more pronounced when looking at the draft goals. So I'm, I'm going to say that's a, if, if people want more here, they're going to want really more under draft goals.
Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. Can, can you remind us again where this fits in what we're talking about and what its purpose is? And the reason I'm asking is because, I mean, I don't disagree with the importance of economic vitality and whether supportive business climate is the right verbiage. But I, but my understanding is they're supposed to be encompass a lot, but be general? So can you remind us again where this fits?
Yeah, so the, so the foundation of the strategic plan is three sort of purpose statements. And it's the vision, the mission, the guiding principles. So that, that's kind of the foundation. And then we have five strategic priorities or proposing five. And then each of those that have a goal and some objectives and some actions. So this is really providing the broad, you're right, the broad sort of foundation of who we are and what we're trying to do. And then, then we get into much more specifics as we go forward from here.
Okay, thank you. So I agree with the comments about whether or not supportive business climate, whether those three words are the right words. But I don't think it's supposed to do everything in this list. The one thing I do think is missing, correct me if I'm wrong, is we talk about the people. We, but nowhere in there is about engaging or being active with our people.
So engaging the community is, okay. So, engaging the community, okay.
Something.
Other comments? Oh, comments? All right.
All right. So, I wanna start talking about the strategic priorities and goals, and I wanna kind of tell you the story of how we got here and what we think is included, and then the action I'm looking for tonight, in addition to just feedback, is we want to agree on what are the, are the strategic priorities, because they will form the next set of the, the process. So, an earlier version of this was put out at the charrette with slightly different wording, but basically the same categories. And so the proposal is that there are five strategic priorities for this plan. They are growth and development, mobility, infrastructure, environmental stewardship, and city leadership and services. Like I say, slightly modified as a result of the charrette, but not really different categories. And then, then some work by staff leadership at trying to define these for the, the piece that went out on Peak Democracy, and for my purposes, these are actually written as nice goal statements, so I would propose them as draft goals to be reviewed by and modified by the work groups going forward. So, not a proposal to adopt them today, but they're kind of, kind of written as goal statements. So, growth and development would be about proactively manage the type, character, and pattern of development, addressing affordability and providing services for new and existing residents. Mobility, prioritize local travel and diversify options to make it easier for people to get around town. Infrastructure, ensure utilities, roads, parks, power, and other public and private facilities can be properly built and maintained to serve our current and future community. Environmental stewardship, intentionally plan, maintain, and preserve Issaquah's environment and natural setting. And city leadership and services, build trust in decision-making through authentic, transparent, and inclusive community engagement, and strengthen collaboration to provide valued services for our growing and diversifying community. And this is here trying to sort of encompass what are the goals and where will the objectives come in under that, not proposing that we debate the individual words, but we want to make sure that everything that we want to do has a home under one of these. We then put this out on Peak Democracy and put those out there with those, exactly those descriptions I just said, and we asked people, after reviewing the draft priority topics, are we on the right track? And just about exactly three-quarters of those that responded to the Peak survey, Peak Democracy survey, said, yes, we're on the right track. So, that, three-quarters, pretty good response. We also asked people in the online survey, sort of open-ended feedback and comments about things that came from the open house, and on the, on the online survey and open house, about 90% of the comments we got back fell kind of easily into one of those buckets of growth and development, mobility, infrastructure, environmental services and city leadership, or environmental stewardship and city leadership and services. So, they actually, to me, that was reinforcing that actually most of the stuff that are on people's minds fit into those categories. Then moving into sort of what do, what do we think is contained under these goals, and trying to sort of roll up that sheet I showed you as many slides back about all the stuff that came out of the charrette, trying to find a home for everything. So, we're saying that growth and development would include character, density, housing, affordable and inclusive engagement, social services, deliberate character within different parts of the city, including historic preservation, density in the right places, diverse housing alternatives, affordable and inclusive community engagement, and social services along with growth and development. Mobility would be about multimodal transit, bike and pedestrian access, regional approach and partnerships, aligning land use with mobility goals, and investing in creative and diverse infrastructure and solutions.
Brian, I wanna stop you. We go back to growth and development.
Sure.
I'm just having a sense that we might want to talk about each of these rather than going through all five and then coming back to talk about them. So, let's, let's talk about this one a little bit. This is also, I'll just lead off with, this is where there was a comment at the charrette about social services, right? And it hadn't gotten in the original shortlists, and so I just wanted to point out near and dear to my heart that this is where social services showed up. Other thoughts, questions, comments about this one and the, and the sub-bullet items? I think councilmember Hunt was first.
I, I understand that there's a lot of overlap between all the categories, and social services, I, I think, also falls under city leadership and services. I also wondered in looking at this, because there's a very important overlap with the environmental stewardship, because as we grow and develop, that's perhaps the most important area in which we need to be intentional about preserving our natural areas. And so, for me, I think I am okay with calling out overlap, because those overlaps are real. I would want to call out the overlap with the environmental stewardship in the growth and development section.
Councilmember Goodman.
I just had a question, maybe I missed it, but the, the green bullets underneath, these are what showed up at the charrette? Is that what you're talking about?
These are, we, I showed you a slide with that whole wall graphic that we did during the charrette, and we tried to record everybody's things, and then we incorporated the ones from the second set of feedback that we didn't have time to take. And so we captured all of that, and we have the transcription of all of that, and then I tried to bundle those things together so it wasn't so many words, to try and capture those key concepts, and essentially, then all of that becomes raw material for those work groups to work on. So, I'm proposing that this, you know, message right here, as well as those transcripts, become an input into the work group process. And so this is me just trying to capture it, so you have kind of the highlights.
So, let me ask it a different way. Growth and development is the sentence after growth and development, proactively manage, is that supposed to somehow include or reflect those bullet points? Because I'm trying to figure out how community engagement shows up as part of the definition of growth and development, if that's the goal.
Fair, that's a fair question. I mean, our sense is, like I said, that these were sort of draft goal statements to ask the committee to, because they were, they were written out, but that's a completely valid point.
Because I think if you have to explain to somebody what something's supposed to mean, then we haven't captured it. And, and I'm not criticizing, and I'm just trying for my own understanding, trying to understand how the, how each of these is supposed to be used and what's supposed to reflect, is what I was trying to understand.
Okay, so, addressing that specifically, the way these will be used is we're proposing that we appoint a work group, and as currently structured, there would be five work groups, and they would have the titles that are listed here. And that work group would be tasked with drafting a goal, with this as a suggestion of a place to start, and identifying some objectives and actions under that goal, and basically, all the input we've had so far would be their ground, starting material. So, the key question for the council tonight is, are these the right categories, and are we missing anything, or is anything in the wrong bucket? And I guarantee those work groups will come back with some stuff you didn't expect out of this, but you might as well tell them, you know, going in, what, what you're thinking.
Thank you.
Councilmember Winterstein.
Thank you. Right or wrong, I was trying, I was looking to see how the guiding principles, which we just spoke about previously, may be found within these, these goals. And right away, I had a difficult time finding people, as it was stated in a guiding principle. And, and, and maybe that was not a good exercise, but, but that's what I looked for. And then, when you, so I heard that comment during the charrette, and I see that's there, and all of a sudden, growth and development is starting to expand in terms of what its intent and meaning is, as soon as you put social services in there. And, and, which immediately took my mind to something that's happening at a regional level, at the four-county regional level, the Pudus Sound Regional Council vision that we're doing. There's a big element, they actually have representation on this policy board from the community health organization, there's people from there, and a, a key tenet that's being worked into is community health. And you can do that actually in your development planning, you know, it's, it's making sure you have parks and you have access, safe access for people to, to, to be outside and, and to recreate, but there's other ways, other things as well. And so that, that people part, when you talk about social services, you talk about community health, I'm not sure where that lives, but it seems like we're starting to grow growth and development to be inclusive of that, and, and to mean that it starts to fall short on the whole issue of community health as well.
So, I heard, make sure that we include people throughout, and community health should be included in the growth and development category.
Nope, all right. Thank you, Brian.
So, then, mobility would include multimodal transit, bike and pedestrian access, regional approach and partnerships, aligning land use with mobility goals, and investing in creative and diverse infrastructure and solutions.
Councilmember Winterstein.
Your third bullet, align land use with mobility, and I've learned recently, it kind of goes both ways sometimes. Make sure that your, your, your transportation plan aligns with your land use, and/or make sure that your, you make appropriate changes to land use to that reflects what's happening, especially on planned future investments on transportation. So, it actually works kind of, the land use works both ways. I'm not sure, so, it's almost like align land use and mobility goals.
Synchronize land use and mobility goals, I mean, it's not sort of, it's not a directionality thing. I get your point. I will say, I just, I probably should have said this, and this particular goal and its subsets was the most highly-charged discussion group at the charrette, and every word on every flip chart was highly litigated in those discussions. So, it's clear to me that's gonna happen in these work groups coming up too, is that there'll be a lot of debate about nuances of this. Poor Gabriel was trying to facilitate that, he had his hands full.
He did a great job, by the way.
Other comments? Nope, all right, thank you.
So, then, infrastructure includes critical facilities to support community prosperity, capital investments, adaptable and opportunistic design, placemaking and destinations, connectivity to neighborhoods, and resiliency, were the things that came up under this category at the charrette as things that should be addressed.
Councilmember Hunt.
For me, this one, first of all, the, the wording with ensure that they can be properly built, I think it's very passive, ensuring that they can be properly built, I think we need more active wording on that one. But also, I think, we got very few comments on this one and, from, from the public, and I, in reading the memo, this was a suggestion of, of your group, I believe, to include, to include it separately, because there are needs in this area. And I agree that there are needs, but in my opinion, the infrastructure needs are so tightly interwoven with the growth and development, and they're so closely linked, and looking at these lists with the connectivity to neighborhoods and critical facilities to support community prosperity, all of these things need to happen in concert with growth and development. I would propose that we consider including development and infrastructure as a priority together.
Make, you're saying make number one and number three all part of one priority?
Yes, because I think they are in parallel, and they, to be effective, they need to be considered in parallel.
Great point, thank you. And you highlighted for me something that I saw but I couldn't name. You could make the same kind of argument that utilities, we should break apart, and water is in there somewhere, and, well, that's really a service that we provide, so that's kind of down under number five. Matter of fact, a lot of this infrastructure are services, and in fact, roads is really mobility. And, and, and there, it just, and so these do, there is quite a bit of intersection and overlap on, on some of these. And, and so that was, that was what I was, when I saw this, when I saw infrastructure and down below, when I saw just the name, city leadership and services, you know, I thought a lot about roads, I thought about water, because we're a purveyor of water, and those felt like those were really together, the same type thing. And I, so I don't know, I don't have a more directional bit of advice for you, but, and I don't know, maybe it's okay that there's, there's overlap, but there seemed to be a more natural affinity between utilities, especially water, and our services, and roads, and our mobility.
Councilmember Batiste.
Just to give a little bit of context, I, I did sit in on infrastructure for the charrette, and there was quite a lot of conversation around, definitely, the, the tie to growth and development, but there was a lot of conversation around the maintenance of the infrastructure, and that was really a big piece of, of what we talked about, and so that, that, to me, sort of, almost falls outside of growth and development, but the concentration on the infrastructure and the maintenance of the infrastructure, and being able to do all of, maintaining everything into the future. So, in the discussion I was in, it seemed to separate itself out for that particular reason.
So, I'll, I'll add to that. I mean, the challenge to me, if you, if you think about combining one and three, is, I think about infrastructure as the hardening of our sort of first level of Maslow's hierarchy of needs. Most of the rest of this stuff, except possibly safety and item five, most of the rest of this are, are nice-to-haves, or aspirational, or sort of strategic long-term, or responding to long-term trends that are occurring around us. This is one that's just the basic, if we didn't add one person to the city and one business ever again, if we just raised the moat and, and just were the 26,000 of us for the rest of eternity, we'd still need to work on these pieces. And particularly for me, as, as you know, Brian, because we've worked on E911, resiliency is a, is a big part of what I think we need to be able to respond to. So, I don't know, if you combine one and three, there's a, to me, there's something that has to do fundamentally with responding to stuff that's happening down the road and just getting our stuff together, and I feel like this is the getting our stuff together element. So, I worry that we would, worry that we might lose that if we can combine them, and I don't know how to address that off the top of my head.
Councilmember Hunt.
I also think there are parts of this that fall into different categories, and for me, so I sort of went through and thought, well, the, the resiliency, that's, to me, that's part of city leadership and services. So, I think there are kind of divisions here, not necessarily everything cleanly in infrastructure fits under growth and development. There are, as councilmember Winterstein pointed out, there's also infrastructure that is for our mobility needs, and so I, I see that not everything cleanly fits under growth and development, but there are also these pieces that are currently in this infrastructure bucket that I think fit in these other categories. And to me, dividing them out gives us, in my opinion, four strategic goals that are more, that I, I can wrap my head around easier.
So, so, open to a suggestion from the consultant?
Of course.
Basic, I think, following up on councilmember Mart's comments, I mean, the basic things that the city really has to do and the city is responsible for are often not the same things that the citizens are most passionate about. You know, it's kind of this basic thing about being the municipal entity, corporation, you gotta do these things. And those things need attention, and, you know, you've been through various cycles of investment or disinvestment, and those things need attention, and. And you're right, from the support memo, this is something that the consultant suggested as a strategic priority. Now, I'd be, and the list under the green list came out of the charrette in response to this heading, and it includes quite a lot of things that probably we wouldn't have written into it. It might be, one idea would be to say, keep infrastructure or something like infrastructure as a category, but narrow its focus to being core sort of city infrastructure services and making sure that you are planning for the next generation of investment in that. So you're doing your responsibility as a municipal corporation. At the same time, some of these things that are kind of stuff the city ought to do could get repositioned. That would be a way to respond to.
Councilmember Hunt?
I would like to respond to that. I saw in some other cities, I was looking at the wording, and one of the wordings that came up was a commitment to core services, but in this case, it could be something like commitment to core, maintaining core infrastructure needs, something like that. And I think, so in my mind, that would be different, that would be a way to bite it up.
So I'm a little confused. What is the proposed change, then? What would we, what would we want to see change from these five?
Councilmember Hunt?
Well, initially, I was thinking to combine one and three. I think there's a lot of feedback that three has distinct elements as well as overlapping elements. And my, so based on that, my opinion has evolved, and I would say that infrastructure clarified that that's our core existing infrastructure that we need to maintain versus, the other big thing here is that as we grow and develop, we need to be proactive about making sure that our infrastructure keeps pace. And so that was what I was thinking. But if we separate them and make sure that that overlap is clearly noted, that would, I think, meet my, that would address my concern.
Okay, great.
And Brian, do you feel like you understand the gist of what you're hearing from how to move what gets moved out of this item into other items?
I think so. I've been trying to read Emily's body language, and she hasn't moved a muscle in two minutes. I think so. It seems to me that there are some items that might be moved to other buckets, but this should be really focused on core municipal infrastructure and sort of making sure we're taking care of those long-term investments.
All right, sort of looking around. Right, shall we move on?
So then, environmental stewardship would include intentional planning and vision for environmental issues, preservation of the natural environment, including watersheds and land, intentional planning and foresight to provide quality city parks and acquire open space, and community ownership and buy-in for their resources, stewardship and support. Again, I think here's a place that clearly ties into the conversation we were just having, that parks really has a home here, and it's kind of on the list above, and, you know, probably should be here, based on that conversation that we just had.
Councilmember Goodman, you look like you want to say something? No?
It's brief. My reaction to the word intentional is that, I don't know what the difference is between intentionally plan and plan. Maybe, because all the plans we have are intentional in that we adopt them and we take action on them and we implement them, I guess I would, maybe these aren't the words we're going to end up. But the word I think of better, that may be better than intentional, is something like, I don't know, thoughtfully, or, and I don't even know that I have a right, a better word, I just have a reaction to intentionally.
The committees, the work groups will work on exactly how this is presented in the final plan. This is making sure they got the right list.
You prefer intentional planning over unintentional planning? Is that what you're saying?
Well, it implies that we plan and then we intentionally plan. Okay, then I guess we should add intentionally in front of all the words plan. That's my, what I don't like about it.
Got it. Other feedback? Councilmember Hunt?
I think potentially, to substitute for intentional, we could use something about long-term, or another word, getting at this long-term planning.
Okay. Councilmember Ramos?
Yeah, so maybe it's kind of like, I see the word vision after that, but more visionary planning. I mean, I've used the words in some things I've looked at sometimes, and I think we're not looking at, we're not futuristic enough in that outlook. So something that's more visionary than, you know, because I can make a very simple plan, but more visionary plan, and goes back to, again, to the second line there, we're talking about preservation of the natural environment. Again, we're back to that preservation thing where it's like, we don't want to just preserve things, we want to actually improve things as we go along. Yeah, I'm just reiterating that again.
I think what people were saying at the charrette was, we don't want to just be reactive and sort of play in defense, we want to proactively, intentionally think forward and make progress, just like you're saying. I think that's exactly what they were trying to say with those words.
Councilmember Winterstein?
Thank you. Word of caution about parks. So you just equated the word parks up in infrastructure with kind of land and space, and yet, of course, there's a capital P, parks, which is a department, and it provides programming and things beyond just land. So I don't, I don't know, anyway, just because you said that, that's what sprung to mind as well. Parks isn't just about environmental stewardship or about land. For us, it is more than that.
Recreation programs as well.
Exactly, exactly. And I'm going to take this opportunity while I have the mic really quick, and infrastructure, if you, you have roads up there, and, boy, if you could add the word trails of all types in that as well, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. Other comments? All right.
All right. And then, the last one on this list, city leadership and services includes update clarity and focus of the purpose and mission statement, we're doing that right now, fiscal discipline, build trust within the community, community engagement, diversity in leadership, equity and safety.
Oh, oh, Councilmember Hunt?
I have one, which was, when I first read this, I thought build trust in decision-making was too narrow because potentially we need to build trust in actions as well as decision-making.
Councilmember Ramos?
I guess I'm just, trying to think, fiscal discipline, I'm kind of just, you know, we can't spend something we don't have, you know? So what, you know, discipline, I'm not sure. And now we always use these words, you know, conservative and, you know, those kinds of words. So, and maybe it's integrity or something, but it just feels a little, discipline sounds a little.
Vague.
Well, second-grade-ish discipline, I don't know, go back to Catholic school or something, I don't know.
Well, I mean, here's why I actually like it, because, you know, we talk about what our ending fund balances, right? And so tying things like that back to specific city goals and being able to say, look, we, the community said fiscal discipline was part of it, we get to define what fiscal discipline is, but being able to tie it back into, you know, if somebody says, well, there's some other element where this is, you know, this is the compensatory goal.
All right, other, oh, Councilmember Batiste, Deputy Council President Batiste?
So I have a comment after we go all the way through number five, so I just wanted to make sure that I'm not interrupting comments regarding number five before I speak. So back to our conversation earlier about jobs and economic vitality, we don't have to, also President Mart's comment, we don't have that listed anywhere. So I was trying to get it all the way through so I could look at this one more time. I guess there's, could we go back to growth and development for a moment?
If I was doing it, I would add it to that list, as a, if you wanted to make sure it was deliberately there.
Well, I'd like to add it somewhere. I think it probably makes the most sense there. I don't see another place for that to pop in, but I would love to hear from others.
Councilmember Winterstein?
Yeah, if I may, I was thinking, thank you for that comment, I was thinking along those same lines, but that's why I spoke earlier about people, and you had social services in there, what about, you know, about community health type of thing? So if we want to take growth and development kind of in that direction now to kind of bring economic vitality and jobs in there now, ooh, boy, that's a big.
It's huge.
Goal area that just got a lot bigger, which just, to me, it kind of tips the scale, saying, is there some other division or goal area that? That's just a react, I don't have a, that's for you to think about. I do agree, because I think growth and development, there is a, there are multiple things that grow, you know, and there are multiple things that develop. And I think these are developments, this is a growth that primarily is suggesting in our population. And as we, as we build neighborhoods or build out the central area because, you know, with, you know, kind of housing that's not there now, it's that kind of development. But of course, you know, there is economic development, and there is the growth of more jobs and opportunity, economic opportunity in the city. So this seems to be growth and development, which is about people and their living and the kind of living environment that they have. But there is, there is the growth and development, which is economic, which go hand in hand. But they, but this one has gotten to the people's side as well, once you get to social services and community health.
So you could convince me, I'm just, I haven't vetted this with anybody, I'm thinking with you here, you could convince me that there are two strategic priorities in number one and number two there. And one of them is about how the community grows and develops physically, that includes land use and transportation and character. And then there's another one about how the community grows and develops around people and prosperity that has, you know, affordability, you know, economic prosperity, social services, I mean, I'm just sort of making this up as I'm saying it, but that would be a sort of an organizing principle to take, that there's two concepts, and one of them's about what does it look like on a map, and another one's about what does it look like sort of in the economy, I thought. Certainly, when we did the community engagement, which I think is useful and you should take it into account, but you're the city council, you should make the decisions, certainly the stuff that was right on the top of everybody's minds was how the community was physically growing and changing and mobility. I mean, those are the things that rose up, you know, in that way. And then some of the other elements that have come into this is, as we've sort of vetted it through things, well, there's the other things that are important that aren't quite as much on the tip of everybody's tongue.
If I may, feedback to yours, that I wasn't, wasn't quite tracking with you until you used the analogy of kind of what you see on a map. And versus the other growth and development, which is that you don't, it's not a two-dimensional map, it's three-dimensional, it's many-dimensional. So that, if there is a way to divide it that way, if that makes sense, and what you said earlier, what came out of the earlier work about development and transportation, absolutely. You know, what you've learned from and heard from the community, what you felt, how you tried to capture that, we're not diluting that reality one bit. But I wonder if this other element, which is about economic growth and development and prosperity, that's the one we still need to capture.
It's a general comment, which is, I think that one thing that's really important to the community is arts and performing arts and music. And that's something that has come up in a few comments. It doesn't cleanly fit into any bucket, but I think that it could be part of the city leadership and services because it's something that does make us a unique community, and I would like to make sure that, you know, with our environment and with the other things that make us a GUESS so special, we make sure that strategically we hold on to that.
Great. I'll plus-one that, because I always feel like one of the things that we have that is pretty amazing is our local art scene. And I feel like we don't do enough strategically with it, so to bring, put it someplace in our, in our plans are important.
I'm going to capture that comment, and then let me try out my idea on you. So just trying to capture what we were just saying. What if we, what if we re-sort of named and re-jumbled things into physical growth and development and economic and community vitality?
Councilmember Hunt, looks like she wants to say something.
I think, I understand the division, I like the concept of the division, I'm not sure that the physical growth and development quite explains what we needed to explain.
So, Councilmember Winterstein?
I'll just add to that, I think you're moving in the right direction.
Councilmember Batiste?
I agree. I think you're moving in the right direction, yeah, just the wordsmith on the physical growth and development, I think that there's probably a better term for that, but I think we're moving down the right pathway with that.
So I have a question for City Administrator Moon, which is, I'm not sure that we're ready today to put sort of a seal of approval on the five, based on the comments about this and kind of where we're at. Would it throw a large wrench in the system if we asked Brian and his team to go think about this and come back to us with a recommendation? Because I'm just not positive we want to, if we don't have to, I'm not positive we want to say that these five are the five that we want, which I know is what we were hoping to do today.
I think this is a really critical part of the process. So if we're not ready, then we need to think about how to come back together and have subsequent conversation and what work needs to happen in between those conversations. I think that might be wise. I'll just share one thought as I'm sitting here, is how you're going to utilize these goals in the future. And as we keep adding bits and pieces that are all very, very important pieces, I struggle to think about what comes next. How do we apply this and help ourselves to prioritize things, to make decisions? If we include everything and everything's a priority, I think it's a little bit hard to have the framework for that decision-making in the future. So again, this is meant to be your strategic priorities for the next five years, it's not meant to describe all the things that are important to us as a community, all the things that we must continue to do in the next five years. There are fundamentals, there are things that are part of our fabric that we will continue to be, continue to do. So that's a lens we haven't talked about very much as we've been debating what goes into these buckets, but I think that would be an important conversation for you to have, too. There's a sequencing, though, that we could consider, and whether or not you need to do that work now, or if that work comes later after the task teams get together and start to refine this a little bit. But I would be anxious about sending those teams off to do that work if you haven't fully come to some consensus about these priorities. So with that, what I might do is ask Brian to weigh in on that, or David, if he has some thoughts on timing and next steps.
But I think that'd be good.
So I would echo Emily's comments about, this is a key point. I mean, this is, I tried to characterize this as a decision point of sort of defining categories, so yes, it's very important, very important that we get it right. At the same time, it is on the critical path of sort of moving forward, the next, the very next step is, you know, populate these committees and tell them to get to work. So, yes, it's important, we don't want to defer it very long, I don't know what, when your next meeting is. meeting is. It also is, seems to me, quite possible that if you tell us we are going in the right direction, we can begin sort of articulating what's in these things and refining it and figuring out who's going to be on these groups and stuff, and be doing that work, and then come back to you to get the language at the top of that right. I mean, my guess is we can do a fair amount of the exact next step, as long as you tell us more or less you think we're going in the right direction.
Okay. So, I mean, are we, I'm trying to remember, are we doing the July 9th work session, or did we decide we necessarily need that? I can't remember. We might have been talking about not doing it, but...
Yeah, I believe we do have an item on that. I'll look it up.
So, so I guess, and I'm not, I'm not saying we want to necessarily do this, but I mean, I think the question would be if, if we felt like, if a majority of the council felt like they weren't ready to finalize these five tonight, I think the alternative would be to come back on the 9th after giving Brian and his team time to revise based on this feedback and come up with the five.
Sure. There are two items on that evening, at least tentatively scheduled, next, water system plan sub-element, and then the permitted land use table revisions. And so we could, we could contemplate that. And I do think it's really important for you to decide that you're okay with how we're going to proceed. After that point, I, I think we start running into complications because our work sessions and committee of the whole get quite full.
Okay. And I don't know how my council, fellow council members are going to feel about it. I just wanted to say if we did want it, if we did want to do something like that, that's kind of like what the timeframe might look like. So, Councilmember Winterstein?
If you drop the word "physical" and keep growth and development per your original intent, I think, and you added economic and community vitality, you can move things out of your growth and development down into there. And it would be a home for what we said was missing when it came around economic development. I think growth and development actually starts to shrink a little because you, because you can move things to economic and community vitality.
And do we roll mobility into that, or is that a separate?
I'd be, I'm not, I'm not sure. I'm trying, I am sensitive to Emily's point about, you know, everything's a priority. And, and, but not everything is equal priority. And, and we, but, you know, we're, this is a five-year plan, or priorities supposedly to, you know, to guide us for five years. Then I think this sixth area is needed. But I think it's also an area for some of the things you've already identified that are maybe in some of these other places. So it would just be more of cleaning it up and providing a more natural home for some related priorities.
Councilmember, Councilmember Hunt?
I'm in support of taking another look. I think that this is a really long-term plan. And so if we can have another look and, and refine it before it goes to work groups, I'm in favor of that. And I also thought that the 75%, so one in four people that had actually engaged on this plan and worked on it, said that they didn't think it was going in the right direction. So I realize that's the glass-half-empty way of looking at it, because three in four thought it was in the right direction, but one in four thinking it's in the wrong direction, I think it's not a slam dunk. And so I would, I would like to see it refined, and so I would like another chance to look at it.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman?
I'm, I'm fine with another look. And I appreciated Emily's comments when she made them, when she did, because that, those are my thoughts. I'm, I'm, I want to make sure that we're just not at the will of what we think feels like should be added here, that we're actually staying true to the process and coming up with the list, the priority approvals that the community is helping us come up with. And I don't think anybody's saying that economic and community vitality isn't important. But just to completely come up with a new strategic priority, I'm not sure I'm in support of that. I don't want to just throwing stuff up against the wall because it didn't rise to the level that we think it should have risen to. But I'm fine with taking another look at it.
Councilmember Ramos?
Yeah, I'm there. It's two weeks. We've got two weeks to spare, I think, on this critical thing. So I think we're pretty close, but I'd like to take that two weeks.
Deputy Council President Bateese?
I agree with going forward and having another touch, so we can talk about this.
So I also support that. You know, I like the idea of a great, something, a greater emphasis on economic vitality. So whether, I don't know if infrastructure looks like it naturally, or sorry, if mobility looks like it parts out naturally to those two plus the other three that we've already got, you know, then we stick with five strategic priorities. But I, you know, I did feel like originally, based on the conversation this evening, we were a little light on the economic vitality. And because that is an essential part of who we are as a city, I sort of like it, but I leave it to your capable hands to come back with something that you think would reflect the net sum of the things you heard from the six of us this evening.
All right. Okay, there's just one other piece that the staff and council leadership asked me to comment on briefly. That was the, that was the deferred decision that we needed to make. And, but I just have like three or four more slides to talk about. So what are you going to do with a strategic plan after we get it done? There's been a variety of questions about how does this roll in. So I want to present kind of a theoretical framework for how a city government might do this. And we have plenty of examples of places that are trying to, trying to use strategic plans in this way. And just a couple of thoughts on that. So first of all, it's sort of strategic plan, sort of implementation framework. And there's a few basic ideas in this, which probably will take a little bit of a shift in sort of thinking how you've been doing your work day-to-day or month-by-month over the last couple of years. So strategic planning is long-term strategic thinking. It's getting up out of the day-to-day and thinking, what are we, where are we trying to get? How are we going to get there? And kind of stepping back from the din of whatever crisis you got going this week and thinking, what's that long-term? Implementation of a strategic plan is the coupling of strategic thinking with new realities, because you don't know today what you're going to know six months from now about whatever else happened. And so as you go through implementation, you're going to be using your strategic thinking to guide your activities, but then you're going to update that regularly with the new realities that we all know will happen. I think a key concept in making that function and keeping yourself, the trap that's so easy to fall into as a public organization, a public corporation, is sort of responding to whatever the crisis is and whoever stacked the room with the most people that day. So, so you kind of have to remember that the council's job is to set direction for what's supposed to happen. And kind of your job is to filter all that noise that you get all the time, and every time you go to the grocery store or wherever, and then sort of provide some strategic direction to staff. And then let the staff do their job that they're highly well-trained for and capable of, is managing implementation at your direction. And so part of implementing a strategic plan is remembering what your job is. Council setting direction, staff is managing implementation. And then I think the holy grail in terms of implementing a strategic plan effectively is having an annual schedule of policymaking and budgeting that reflects a strategic plan. So you're, you're pulling this strategic thinking, and you're coupling it with new realities and rolling it into a schedule of policymaking and budgeting. So the whole being of the city becomes a function of this strategic planning. And just to kind of illustrate that point, the, the green sort of cycle here is kind of how the council sets that direction. You're, you know, at the end of a cycle, you are evaluating the performance of the city. How did we do on what direction we gave before? You're reporting out to the community on what is that direction and gathering input from the community, all the ways that you do. This is how we did last year, and what do you think? And getting that community. And then you're going to make adjustments to the strategic plan. So you adopt the strategic plan, you work for a while, then you report your performance progress out to the community, get the community's input, and then it's time to step back and say, okay, strategic plan told us we were going to be here, and you know what, the dam broke in the meantime, or a giant corporation located a new headquarters here, or whatever else happened. You know, okay, do we need to adjust some of our strategic priorities in response to that? And then you've got the annual council retreat, which is a good time to kind of step back away from the day-to-day. And then that tees you up toward your budgeting process, kind of along the way toward the next time around on this cycle. And then kind of between the time that you make the strategic plan adjustments and have the retreat, and when you're starting to evaluate again, it's the time that the work plan is getting implemented. You basically have set the direction for the staff, and they're doing their jobs every day to try and move forward in the direction that you're taking. So it's kind of setting up, and, and most cities that I'm familiar with that have done this, it takes not just one time with some consultant standing up in the front of the room and saying, do it this way. It actually takes months and years to kind of get this, till you get the hang of kind of when it is that you're making a strategic decision, and then the staff is pulling it forward, and you're checking in with the community. We've got some examples of some communities that have done some work on that. So that's just a quick primer on, we'll have much more to say about this as we get further on in the process. But the goal would be to have you kind of move into a cycle of how the staff and the council are working together. Does that make sense?
Comments? Councilmember Goodman?
Well, not specifically about that.
Oh, I'll kind of, how do we do this? Because, the reason I ask is because I think this is philosophically something that essentially almost everybody on council that I've worked with for the last nine years has wanted to do something like this. And it reminds me of, there was a cartoon years ago, there was a class on how to sculpt elephants. And it was like, take the block and remove everything that's not the elephant. It's like, it's actually a little harder than that to sculpt. And so how do we, this is, this is really hard, not the least of which, because it typically takes some money and people.
Well, you do it deliberately by establishing a schedule that you're going to do it. We're right now in, in working very closely with Salem, Oregon, on trying to move from strategic planning into this cycle. They finished their strategic plan last fall, and then they had a budget process that happened through the winter and the spring. And a couple of things happened during that, is the, the city department heads started meeting on a, sort of like a quarterly basis as an enterprise team to think about the whole corporation and how things were working, as rather than just kind of managing their individual silos and keeping their calendar straight, you know, with the coordination. They actually started really thinking strategically about what needed to happen. And working together, they teed up a presentation to the council, which the council was calling their, their council policy agenda, which identified, what are the priorities for this next year as they moved into this sort of second year? What, what do we, we have the strategic plan has however many objectives, they had 20-some objectives, you know, which of these do we think? And they identified, I think it was about five, that were priorities, and gave some direction. And then that was an input into the city budget process. And they came out with some priorities in that. And it was not perfect. And there were, probably alluding to some of the things you were saying, there was a key city facility that there were strongly different opinions about whether they needed to reopen that facility. And, you know, politics had more to do with how that question was answered than strategic planning. And stuff happens like that, you know. So they, they, you know, I, we kind of got done with that cycle, and we went, well, it was better than last year, and we're on our way. So I think it's, it's kind of messy. But it's trying to sort of purposely go through those steps and recognize that you're doing that. And it takes some getting used to.
To be clear, some of those steps we do, but the performance evaluation piece is in terms of, as a public process that involves the council and, you know, a feedback loop back to the council is something that we have done to limited extent thus far. Other questions, comments? Councilmember Goodman?
Is this the last?
I think, yeah, I think this is, yeah.
There we go.
My comment is that I think it's really exciting. And I'm, I'm glad we're here, and I'm glad that, that you're helping us. And I really look forward to the end product. This, this has been a long time in coming, long needed, and again, I'm very excited for it.
Thank you. So my last, last slide, the next, immediate next step is that the work groups will begin addressing the strategic priorities, and they're going to convene in July, just as we, as soon as we've had one more check-in. And then when they are beginning to some of their draft results, we'll be vetting the goals and objectives with the community, and coming back to you with proposed goals and objectives in September. And assuming this next little piece that we agreed to add happens in a couple of weeks, I think we're right on track with that.
All right. Well, thank you, Brian, so much for facilitating that conversation. One of the things that I do like to do in these meetings is offer public comment. So if there's anybody, if there's any members of the public that would like to speak to us this evening and take a few minutes, three being a few.
Three minutes for an hour and a half of complex conversation. Comcast wasn't broadcasting your meeting, by the way, so I have to come down.
We are aware there's a problem with Comcast.
So I came, I came down to play. So strategic planning for me is, they went out to the community and they said, wow, what's going on? What are the issues? The community came back and said, these are our issues. And they tried to focus them down into sort of cogent parcels. And so then sort of the lobbying began in the, the chamber of commerce things, and more social services came in from that. So now this next step in my brain is that you're trying to create a decision-making structure to understand what you're going to fund and what you're going to prioritize in order to resolve or solve some of those community issues that came out at the beginning. It's hard for me to understand that you're going to have the memory of those conversations as you are looking at this tool, because it, it quickly becomes sort of out of context, and the words don't have the same meaning. And so that is a concern for me. So the quality of life for people who are living and doing business in this town feels like it has been eroding. Our environment feels like it's been eroding. The businesses are having to go through a dramatic shift, and nobody really knows who's supposed to pay, how we're going to get the money, or how we're going to make it livable ever again. And so this is supposed to give you a short form to that. I'm missing balance of funding to what? Are we going to fund social services? It says ensure that people are going to have the same opportunities in town. Well, that's just not possible. Well, at the same time, we're only maintaining our environment. We aren't enhancing it. We're just sort of protecting it and keeping it the same. Well, the same is mainly in BlackBerries, right? Transportation is a big, huge, regional funding ball of wax. So it seems like the funding for that is going to be how to get more funding for that. And then the last thing is timing of it all, because we are so fast and change happens so much. It seems like timing is actually one of the big, huge pieces of what is making our town fall apart a little bit. It's going, buildings are, are just popping up even as traffic increases and the region around us grows to that, that wild extent. And we don't know how to cope. And so while this sort of sounds like an emotional feed, I think that's how most of you make your decision-making and decide to fund during the budget. It's what is most urgent at the time. So in this strategic plan, I would love to have a link between that sort of community consensus that we got and how to make your decisions. Even if you have this language, which is bland, I just, I feel without that sort of link, it's not going to work, at least to my expectations. And of course, my expectations are way up here. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much for your comment. Anyone else in the public? Nope. All right, with that, we will move on to our second item of the evening, which is ID 0275 Water System Plan, and this is presented by Robert York and Jeff Hanson. And by the way, before we start that- And by the way, before we start that, Brian, I apologize for misstating your last name. Scott. I will not, I will not make this.
I've got three names, you've got two.
I will not make that mistake twice.
Good evening, council members. Tonight, we're here to discuss the policy considerations associated with the adoption of the 2018 Water System Plan. This is the first of three planned City Council Committee Work Sessions that we plan to be at. The others are coming up in just two weeks, in July and September 10th. In your packet, there is a memo that provides a suggested outline that we shared with the Council Infrastructure Committee. And that also includes a brief discussion of each of the three policy considerations that we intend to present to you tonight and in upcoming sessions. The three policy considerations intend to build on each other as we progress through these workshops. In simplified terms, tonight's workshop is focusing on, on how much water the city needs for planned future growth, in other words, the demand side. Specific focus tonight is on water conservation. The next session, next session focuses on where we can get the water, the supply side. And the final workshop will be focused on the water quality considerations, which are numerous in terms of the water that we have available. In each workshop, our format is to have a brief presentation on the subject matter, including a summary of the decisions made in previous sessions, in this case, a status report on where we are in the Water System Plan, and then, if necessary, answers to any questions you've had from the previous workshop. So tonight, we're fortunate, fortunate to have our consultant project manager here, Jeff Hanson from HDR, and he's going to provide the, provide you with tonight's presentation and assist, assist you and the staff on facilitating the workshop. And also fortuitously, the Office of Sustainability folks are here for the previous strategic plan, and they're, they're heavily involved, I think they're coming back, they're heavily involved in the water conservation efforts for the city, so I think they're planning on being here for this presentation as well. So without further ado, Jeff? Let's tee you up here.
Yeah, pull it up. Good evening, council. See if we can. So which folder would it be? Do I need to?
City Council. Down, I think. It's that one?
Oh.
No, I saw it.
No. Should I plug in my thumb drive, or? Do you know where it would be? I think the clerks loaded it.
Yeah, clerks loaded it.
So I don't know which folder it would be in.
It's usually keyed up for us.
There, you can find it from there.
So as Bob mentioned, this is the first of three work sessions on the Water System Plan Update, and tonight's focus is water conservation. So again, outline of what we intend to talk about tonight. We'll start with an overall kind of general recap of the Water System Plan development, okay, the kind of timeline on that. Through that work, we've identified the key water utility challenges that the city is facing, and then that then prompts key water utility policy questions. Bob already framed them, we'll go over those again. And then we're going to dive into the meat of tonight, which is to talk about the water use efficiency rule requirements and the discussion of policy issue number one, which is water conservation. So first, background. With respect to the Water System Plan as a whole, the bullets here just reiterate why the city goes through water system planning. This is to guide the water utility in its plans into the future, to accommodate growth, identify system deficiencies, and plan for capital improvements to resolve those deficiencies, and also ultimately to meet State Department of Health requirements that require routine periodic updates of the Water System Plan. This table, I'm not going to go through it in detail, but it summarizes the timeline of the development of the plan, which has been a little bit over a year in the making. So the technical work on the Water System Plan Update started last summer, went through the early part of this year. The actual draft plan or document was completed in March. We presented that at the CIC meeting in April, and then we followed that, you may recall, in May with a public hearing specifically on water use efficiency goals. And now during the summer, we're going to go through these council work sessions to discuss these really specific policy questions. Concurrent to that, just so you know, the draft plan is out for external review. So the state is reviewing it, Department of Health, the county, adjacent water purveyors, et cetera. And those comments are due back here in about the next month or so. And so then, in the fall, we'll be responding to those comments and finalizing the document, coming back to council late fall or the winter, seeking adoption of the updated Water System Plan. Before I move on off that, any questions about kind of general timeline and sequence of events? It's fairly straightforward, you've seen that before, but I'm not sure everybody's tracking with that. So as I mentioned, in the course of updating the Water System Plan, these two challenges really came to the forefront as the key issues that the water utility is facing moving into the future. Number one, it's the fact that water demand or the need for water in areas of the city that currently receive groundwater, those demands will surpass the city's groundwater supply capacity within the 10-year planning period. Now, that doesn't mean that demands are surpassing your overall supply capacity, because you also have regional supply from Cascade Water Alliance. But there's a portion of your city that's receiving your own city groundwater supply, and those needs will outpace your available supply within the projected 10-year planning period. Item number two is that groundwater treatment optimization is needed to meet a range of both existing and new water quality requirements. And we're not really going to get into that tonight, that's for a future discussion. But tonight, we're going to start with the first of these three policy questions, which stem from those key challenges. So that first policy question is water conservation. Should the city implement a greater level of water conservation than what has historically been practiced and is currently planned for the future? That's a question posed to you, council. Question two is, what supply options should be advanced for long-term supply to the groundwater-supplied areas where we have this identified deficiency in the future? And then finally, what water quality levels of service does the city want to establish, and how will the city meet those levels of service? So those are the three questions we're going to be discussing over these coming sessions. Tonight, we are really just focusing on question number one, water conservation. So this is the lineup for tonight to dive into conservation. First, I want to start where you've already been, which is a recap of the public hearing that was held back in May to talk about water use efficiency goals. So we're going to see some material you've already seen, but I'll try to hit the highlights and move quickly through that. We'll talk about the city's historical and planned future conservation activities, then we'll talk about your formal water use efficiency goals, which are really regional goals through Cascade. And we'll also talk about the informal targets that have been proposed for the city, for you to track your own progress in conservation. But then we'll go into new territory that we didn't talk about previously in the public hearing, and we'll talk about the potential for additional conservation beyond what you're currently planning for and budgeting for. And then we'll talk about the impacts of that additional level of conservation on that supply challenge that I've mentioned for the areas that receive groundwater. Okay? So again, we're still kind of in background mode. You saw some of this during the public hearing in May. Just a recap of why we held that public hearing. So water use efficiencies, efficiency goals are a required component of a water use efficiency program, which then is part of your Water System Plan. And goals must be discussed in a public forum, so as to provide opportunity for your customers and for the public to provide comment. So you went above and beyond that requirement by having an actual public hearing in May. Now, council received no written comments, I mean, no oral comments at the public hearing, but you did receive some written comments. So we wanted to take some time tonight to address those comments that were received. Okay? So that's what I'll move into right now, before we then get into the more detailed discussion. So those written comments, these have been paraphrased for brevity and the sake of the slides. Comment number one, what conservation programs are being implemented to achieve the stated conservation goal, and is there a yearly dashboard to track this? So as was discussed at the public hearing, and as I will get into detail here in a moment, we'll describe the goal, and we'll also describe the conservation activities that the city currently does. And it's those existing activities that through continued implementation will help you meet the goal, the formal goal that's been set. So we'll outline what those activities are. In terms of yearly tracking of this, the city is required by the state to submit an annual water use efficiency report. And so through that, you are tracking water consumption and progress towards those goals. Question two that was posed, what are the growth assumptions that drive the water demand forecast? They seem more aggressive than is likely to occur. Without going into a lot of detail, bottom line response to this question or comment is that the growth assumptions that we've incorporated into the plan are based on city planning. Those, those inputs come from the city's Development Services Department in terms of planned growth for various areas throughout the city. And that's all consistent with the 2017 City Comprehensive Plan. So that's the basis for those growth assumptions. But we'll talk in a minute about what if those assumptions were modified. Comment three states that the water use factor for multifamily units seems high relative to recent trends. This number could be lower. So as a reminder, the demand forecast is based on water use factors, amount of water per household or per multifamily unit. For the multifamily sector, the demand forecast is based on 124 gallons per day per multifamily unit. By contrast, in 2016, the observed consumption or usage by multifamily units was lower than that at 84 gallons per day per unit. So the question is, well, why are we not using that? Well, that lower value of 84 gallons per day per unit does not include outdoor usage, it's just indoor usage that is fairly consistent throughout the course of the year. So as to capture the outdoor irrigation usage in common areas and green space associated with multifamily development, that's the primary reason why we use the higher number. And also, an underlying tenet in water supply planning is to hedge a little bit conservatively when you're planning, so that you're, you don't underestimate your, your amount of demand into the future. So that's the response to that question. Couple more. Question is, how is the aquifer faring with growth and increased water use by both Issaquah and Samamish Plateau water? I don't have a lot of data to put up on the screen right now, but the bottom line message is that water levels in the aquifer from which you withdraw have been remaining consistent, fairly constant over time. So the, the aquifer is not in decline due to increased water usage. Final comment that was provided, please describe the balance between conservation and water rates, including on the regional or cascade level. And we're not prepared to go into great detail on that tonight, but the bottom line is that this is a very important question, because it hits on an important relationship and an important dynamic between conservation and rates. As we summarize here, obviously, with increased conservation or less consumption, demand is going down, so if more conservation is pursued, then rate studies have to take that into effect, because there is less water being consumed that is being billed. And so sometimes what this results in is a transfer of cost from those that are using high levels of water to those using less water, if you need to readjust rates to cover the cost of service, because a lot of your costs in the water utility are fixed. And so just because consumption goes down, that cost of service doesn't go down at the same rate. That's a complex dynamic that really is in the realm of a rate study, and we can get into that more as you so desire, but we wanted to acknowledge that that is a complex relationship, and that needs to be part of the conversation. Yeah?
I think what you said is that intuitively, you would think that if the demand is down because of conservation, then somehow costs are lowered, but that's not the case, because I think what is experienced is that you then have cost questions. If you're, the demand is down, you're not bringing in as much money from water if the, if, due to conservation efforts.
That's, that's correct. And so within a water utility, a portion of your costs are fixed, regardless, because you have equipment, you have staffing, and so regardless of how much water is utilized, that cost is fixed. There is a portion of your costs that does vary based on consumption, chemical usage, power usage, et cetera. But the point is that a portion of that fixed cost is part of your water rate, right? And so if you're bringing in less rate revenue due to conservation, you need to adjust that, that rate structure to accommodate for that loss in revenue, so as to cover your fixed costs, if that answers your question. Okay? So that isn't, that's an important dynamic to consider, and it's one of, it's kind of the classic struggle with conservation. So moving on, and again, we hit on this during the public hearing, but I want to revisit it here to see if there are questions. Let's talk about the water conservation activities that the city has been and is implementing. So first of all, at the regional level, as a member of Cascade, you are partner with that regional effort promoting conservation. Some of those activities include distribution of free conservation devices, so shower timers, rain gauges, things of that nature. Actual device installation at commercial customers, so low-flow showerheads, low-flow faucet aerators. Cascade administers a variety of educational programs, some of them are listed there on the screen. And then there are also irrigation system audits. So those are Cascade regional activities that you help fund and that you participate in. Also, at the local city level, elements of your conservation program include the items that you see on the screen. So you have a conservation-based rate structure. We also oftentimes refer to that as an inclining block rate. What that means is that as you use more water, a consumer pays more on a per-unit basis, the higher water usage that consumer uses. You also, and this is, I believe, is a newer program or a more focused attention being placed on it this year, and that is focused interaction with commercial customers to talk with those customers about irrigation system settings, best practices, so as to optimize and then minimize amount of usage outside. Focused residential customer engagement with specific neighborhoods, looking at water demand analysis for those neighborhoods, sending letters to high-water users, informing them of their usage. You participate in the National Mayor's Water Conservation Challenge, encouraging residents to pledge to conserve. And then there are various elements of water conservation within your, your green building program. So this, this speaks to kind of the suite of existing conservation efforts that you currently employ. Let's talk about historically how water usage in the city has changed over time. Again, we presented this exact same information in the public hearing, but I just want to recap it. This shows changes in water consumption from 1996 to 2016 by customer class, so single-family residential, multifamily, and then commercial. You will see some trends in terms of declining usage on a per-household or per-unit basis. So for example, single-family residential consumption declining from 228 gallons per day per home in 1996. in 1996 to 141 in 2016. Reminder, the far-right-hand column there, the planning value, those are the values that we are using. They're higher than what's observed in 2016. We're using those to project future demands. So new customers coming on, we're assuming those higher values. This, again, is done to be conservative, to make sure we don't underestimate the water demand forecast. If we then-
Councilmember Wintersky.
Just a really quick comment. Earlier, you made a comment, something about kind of the, I don't know if it was the cost of conservation or a ramification of conservation, about fixed costs and everything. And I think for balance on that topic of conservation, if you take our 1996 numbers that you have on the screen right now, if we hadn't implemented conservation, the groundwater would not be running out of capacity in the 10-year planning horizon. We would probably already be running out. So conservation allows us to take a limited resource and use it more wisely and go further. So, yeah, but it's not free. And I think that was your point.
Right, right. Yep. Yep, good point. Again, information that was provided previously, if we compare Issaquah's water usage characteristics with that of others in this part of the county, you'll see some numbers on the screen there. By comparison, kind of the general message here is that Issaquah's water usage characteristics, if anything, are on kind of the lower end of the range that we see in King County. And I'm not going to delve into specific numbers. You can see those on the screen. And that's just for context and the sake of comparison. So now let's move into water use efficiency goals. So in 2013, again, this is recap from what was discussed in the public hearing. In 2013, the city adopted Cascade Water Alliance's regional goal as your formal goal. And that was the approach taken by all Cascade members, was approved by the State Department of Health. So those 2013 goals, which are still in effect, are shown on the screen to reduce water by 2020 in the following amounts. So on an annual basis, by 0.6 million gallons per day. And on a peak-season basis, by 1 million gallons per day. So Cascade reports very recently that as of the end of 2017, they speak to what their progress is towards achieving that goal. So based on their analysis, they are estimating they've achieved 114% of the annual goal. So they've met it and exceeded it, and 68% of the peak-season goal. So those are Cascade's calculations on the region as a whole. So in the context of this water system plan, and as discussed at the public hearing, what we stated as the city's proposed formal water use efficiency goal was to keep with the regional goal as you have in the past, okay? In which the Cascade Water Alliance Board is set to review and update in 2019 and 2020. Okay? So that's the recommendation for the formal water use efficiency goal. By contrast, in the plan, we also developed what we refer to as informal, longer-range targets that would extend beyond the current regional goal timeframe, which ends in 2020. And these are done specific to the city to really support tracking of continued implementation of existing conservation programs. So those proposed targets relative to the 2016 water use characteristics are shown on the screen. What the targets reflect is over a 10-year period from 2016 to 2026, reductions in usage on the order of 5% for single-family residences and 2% for multifamily and for commercial. And again, those are not proposed as formal adopted goals, but yet informal targets that you could continue to track, just as we did in this water system plan update, where we explored in 2016 what are the water usage characteristics. You can continue to track that information and try to ratchet down usage over time and try to meet these goals. And again, they reflect implementation, continued implementation of your existing water conservation program. Okay? So what does that look like in terms of, when we talk about those percent reductions, what does that mean for overall water savings that could be achieved by those targets? That's depicted here on this chart. The solid blue line on the top is what we call the baseline water demand forecast. Okay? And then the dash line represents savings based on those conservation targets. So 10 years out in 2027, that would reflect average savings of 228,000 gallons per day. And that's on an average-day demand basis. Real quick, and I don't share this to complicate things, but to try to demonstrate that that also tracks very closely with if instead of using those higher planning values for future customers, if we use the lower numbers that we saw in 2016. And if we assume that development would continue and reflect 2016 values, the projections are in the dash red line, and they essentially align with the conservation-based chart. So this is just to illustrate that if you continue to conserve the way that you're conserving, water demand will be reduced from what the baseline demand projection is. And it would be consistent with if water usage was more like it is in 2016. I know there's a lot of numbers on the screen, but this is just to demonstrate the amount of savings to potentially be achieved over a 10-year period. Yeah?
At 2020, it seems like the rate is changing with the forecast. Can you explain that?
This is because if we were to assume, again, the red line assumes that all future development comes in at a lower water use factor, like we see in 2016. And we're seeing some, we are assuming some significant growth in the near term. We would see that effect sooner than if we implement the water use efficiency targets. That 5% reduction takes 10 years to achieve. So that's why that red line is lower early on.
I'm going to try to restate my question, sorry. So on the forecast using higher-planning-level water use factors, the solid line, it looks like there, for whatever reason, there's a projected higher increase until about 20, maybe 2022, yeah.
Oh, and then it changes.
Changes, yeah.
It levels off. That is reflecting growth patterns, projected growth patterns of being more aggressive in growth early in the near future and then tapering off.
Okay.
Yep. Did that answer that? Bob, do you want to say something? Yes, it reflects the build-out of the urban villages in the near term. So now, this is where we get into an area that we didn't cover previously in the public hearing. And this is the question of, what if the city were to implement additional conservation above and beyond that which is already being planned for? What would that look like? So again, the formal goal and the informal targets reflect continued implementation of your existing program. Previously, Cascade, when they set their regional conservation program, they evaluated a range of activities in different packages of those activities. And they made a selection of activities that were deemed the most cost-effective and appropriate to implement at that time. That work was originally done back in 2005 and then was more recently updated in 2010, 2011. We went back and looked at that analysis to understand what is the difference between the current level of conservation and a more enhanced level of conservation? And what would that look like in today's world in terms of water savings and costs? And we also scaled that to Issaquah's portion of the overall Cascade region. So that's the analysis that we did to look at additional levels of conservation. And so what kinds of things would we be talking about that you're not doing now that would be incorporated in this? There's really two main categories of things that Cascade had considered. Those are shown here. One is an increased focus on reducing single-family irrigation more through kind of capital improvement. So it's the use of, it's the distribution and use of rain sensors to time when irrigation occurs and the use of evapotranspiration models to help support that. These things take an extra level of cost than what's currently utilized, but could see water savings based on that. The category is an increased focus on customer behavior through additional education. So these are additional gains through more aggressive education, things such as just decreased in-home usage, decreased partial loads in clothes washers, this kind of thing. So the table summarizes what those additional activities would yield in terms of water savings and also, relatively speaking, the additional level of cost that would be associated with them. So shown in the table are values for the existing conservation program based on that original analysis that was done a decade ago. And then we looked at the impact of additional measures, these ones that I'm talking about, and what would be the percent increase over the existing. And so what we see is there's this potential by implementing these other items to get a 20% greater yield in conservation savings. When we look at cost, and again, these were costs that were generated by Cascade in that prior analysis. I don't want to focus too much on the unit costs, but really look at the increase in those costs. What we see is compared to a 20% increase in water savings, we're seeing a 66% increase in cost per unit volume of water saved. This is just reflecting the fact that when you, the more that you go after additional levels of conservation, you get to a point where it starts to cost more on a per-unit volume basis. It's not an argument to not do it. That's just a reflection of the added expenditure that's required to achieve those levels of conservation. I'm going over that pretty quickly. Are there questions on that before I move on? Because I'm going to then now talk about what this means for the supply versus demand question.
Oh, Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you. Firstly, could you explain what evapotranspiration models means in the context of focusing on single-family irrigation?
Right. So evapotranspiration is the loss of water through plant growth and respiration. So as warmer temperatures and drier conditions occur, you know, turf and plants need more water. So evapotranspiration models are ways to predict amount of irrigation water needed. But it requires you to track very closely various parameters such as temperature and precipitation. And then the models would generate and estimate, here's how much water you need to irrigate with. To apply that on a single-family residential basis is challenging. You have to engage the residents and set them up with those tools. But that's what that's speaking to, is a more sophisticated way to get at defining how much irrigation water is truly needed by turf or plants.
Okay. And then also, the cost per unit of water saved, I'm not sure I completely understand. Is it saying cost per unit of water saved, would that also be cost per unit of water that somebody is using? Because I think that that is more the question that was earlier in the public comment about what does this actually do to rates, water rates?
So this is not water rate. This is expenditures needed to implement the conservation measures. So staff and material resources, the cost thereof, over the life of those conservation measures. So this is not a water rate impact.
Okay, so this is the diminishing returns of increasing conservation when we're already conserving. It's costing incrementally more.
Right.
Okay. I think I would still have the question then about the rates more specifically. You talked about it more generally, but I think that that is also of interest to this conversation.
Sure. So moving on, again, going back to this chart that depicts the savings associated with continued implementation of your existing conservation program. And here, we're moving from talking about it in the context of average-day demand to max-day demand. Okay, so the day of greatest water usage in the summer. And the reason why we're doing that is because that's what we look at when we compare water consumption to your available supply capacity. We look at the max day. So that's why we're starting to use that metric now. So again, continued implementation of your existing water conservation program suggests that 10 years out in the future, you'll have a savings of 480,000 gallons per day. Okay? The savings from additional conservation, so if you were to implement those additional activities that you're not currently planning to do, those would yield an additional savings of 58,000 gallons per day on a maximum-day basis. So now, where this is really of interest then is again in the demand versus supply question. So that's where I want to lead into now. When we look at the portion of the city that is receiving groundwater supply and we compare it to your existing groundwater supply capacity, that's where we have this story of demands exceeding supply capacity into the future. So in this chart, the horizontal red line is your existing well-pumping capacity in total for all four city wells, about 4 million gallons per day. The bars represent the demand on that groundwater supply. And the differences in those two hatchings in the bars reflect the portion of demand that is exerted in Talis and then the portion of demand outside of Talis. If we look at the entire area, including Talis, that's currently fed by groundwater, these demands are increasing over time. And this demonstrates that in 2021, those demands would exceed the red line. They would exceed the groundwater supply capacity. If we don't consider Talis in that equation and we only look at the portion of these bars that are the solid color, that demand exceeding supply situation pushes out to 2025. This is all predicated on the baseline demand forecast, so that higher demand. Okay? If we now factor in conservation with your existing conservation program, we push that time period for that deficiency out by two years. This kind of gets at the point that you made previously. If we look back historically in time, where would we be if water usage had not declined the way that it has? So again, the black portion of these bars indicate the demand in the area outside of Talis that's using groundwater Talis that's using groundwater and is now conserving, based on those targets that we've talked about. If we then assume the additional levels of conservation that we've talked about, that's the white bars, we gain less than a year because those level of savings were not as great as with the savings associated with your current water conservation program. So again, the message here is that all areas served by groundwater right now, that groundwater demand would exceed supply in 2021. If you remove Talis from that equation, it pushes that situation to 2025. If you achieve your currently planned conservation targets, that pushes it by, by another two So that's the backdrop. That's, that's one of the things we wanted to talk about tonight is the sensitivity of the demand versus supply equation to additional levels of conservation. So a summary of that. Your historical water use, the trend is one of decreasing use on a per household or a per unit basis. Your current usage is, is on the lower end of the range observed in neighboring communities. Again, the proposed formal water use efficiency goal is to retain Cascade's regional goal, as you have been doing. Reminder that on a regional basis, that annual goal has been met, but Cascade's going to be updating that goal next year. In addition, we have proposed these informal water use efficiency targets. Those reflect continued implementation of your existing conservation program. They'll allow you to continue to track your own performance. And they could delay by about two years the need for regional supply or some other supply solution to those areas that currently receive groundwater. In terms of additional conservation, based on this analysis, which again, is in turn based on Cascade analysis, we're seeing a larger increase in costs for relatively small water savings compared to that which we project you will see through your existing program. And ultimately, it does not change the timing of the need for regional or other supply to satisfy that groundwater supply deficiency in the near future. So the recommendations that have been set forth currently in the water system plan, again, maintain the Cascade regional goal as your formal water use efficiency goal. Continue to implement your existing conservation program. Track your per household usage and continually monitor that relative to these informal targets. And then, once Cascade reviews and updates the regional program in 2020, consider and implement changes to your program to maintain consistency with that. So before we open it up for more discussion on conservation, just to recap that, from here into the future, in two weeks, we'll be talking more about the supply options and the considerations to be thinking about with respect to that groundwater supply situation. And then later in September, we're going to be talking about water quality and treatment. But that's it for the formal presentation, but we'll open it up for questions and discussion.
Councilmember Hunt.
Question about the recommended target informal levels, which was 5% for a single-family, 2% for commercial, and 2%, I believe, for multifamily. Are those your recommendations?
They are.
And where are they based on?
They're based on professional judgment and understanding the nature of the trends that you have observed over recent history as a result of your existing conservation program. So it's in keeping with those trends and based on professional judgment of, of what we perceive is, is achievable, given continued conservation.
Okay. And then also, on this slide, the point does not change the timing of need for regional supply in areas currently served by groundwater. It looked to me like it did change the timing by two years. Is that correct?
That's for your existing conservation program. If you achieve those informal targets through your existing conservation program relative to that higher baseline demand forecast, that's the two-year savings. This is speaking to additional conservation that goes above and beyond that. So here, that furthest-most purple circle is indicating the result of the water use efficiency targets, your existing conservation program. The additional savings from additional conservation activities result in a delay of less than an additional year, just by the nature of the magnitude of those savings.
Other questions? Nope. All right. Well, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Take public comment now? Is there any public comment?
So I don't, I don't know what numbers they got from the Department of Development Services. For example, the central Issaquah plan is on a very short timeline. So if they're assuming that the central Issaquah plan is going to be complete in 15 or 20 years, I, I, I think that that is not, not unlikely to happen. And that was done more to fit it into an EIS than anything else. And so that, I, I think is sort of an interesting question to ask because the model is based on that assumption, right? And then there was the one other thing that I was, oh, shoot. Oh. They were saying that the 2% and 5% was based on history. Well, if you read the plan, the history shows that we have blown our conservation goals out of the water repeatedly. And so I'm not sure why 2%, 2%, and 5% was assumed when we were going 10, 12. I mean, we've just had these leaps and bounds for water conservation. So I would also question that assumption and try to understand better how, why that's true. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment? Oh, anything else from, oh, one.
We wanted to see what the council feedback was on, on the proposal of water efficiency goals before. Does this sound reasonable to you or is there any more homework we should do?
Is there more discussion?
Councilmember Winterstein.
Well, I think the interesting conversation is moving Talis from groundwater to regional water. Has that been decided or is that just proposed?
No, and that's not decided.
No.
And it's not just sort of proposed.
I didn't think it was.
We wanted to say, what, what are the ramifications of doing that?
Understood. Okay. All right. Okay.
And that will be, that'll play into next.
That's a policy question, too.
That's a policy question, too.
Right. Yeah. So we'll dive into that in more detail, not so much with perspective conservation.
Okay.
But in terms of your different options for how to where move, where to move water in different places of the city next time.
So to the other question, so the, it looks like on your forecast that the maximum daily demand will hit 8 million gallons per day around 2028, 10 years from now. And I'm, I'm not, yes. And I haven't.
This is total citywide demand, yes?
Yep. That additional savings of 58,000 gallons a day is about 0.7, it's seven tenths of 1%. It's less than 1% of the consumption amount. And, and at that level, it goes down as, as the overall consumption goes up. So that's just 10 years out. Assuming all the rest of the elements in the model are correct, then we'd still have to, if we implemented these at, at a cost, we'd still have to take some significant action in the same timeframe at the same cost, anyway. There's, there's intrinsic value in conserving it, but there, it is less than 1% just 10 years from now.
Correct.
And that, it's not real, I think the way you provided, presented it, which I'm hearing it for the first time, if it was intended to say, hey, this isn't compelling, you maybe shouldn't do this because, that's the way, I, I agree, at least the way you presented there, it doesn't seem to be compelling enough to go to these additional conservation measures for the benefit, which is very minimal.
Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you. I, I agree with everything Councilmember Winterstein said. I wondered, though, how much this small, very small difference with the additional conservation has to do with those, I would say, also small targets, the, the 2% for multifamily, which we're expecting to grow in particular.
So, I'm sorry, suppose that again.
It seems to me that this very small difference in the conservation targets that we have now versus the additional conservation is partially a function of having, of setting that additional conservation in the model and in your proposal to a very small percentage of.
So remember, those small percentages, the 2% and the 5%, are reflected in, I'm trying to get the cursor to move, are reflected in this level of savings, the 480,000 gallons per day. They're reflected there. The 58,000 gallons per day of savings are the additional savings associated with additional measures that would go beyond the 2% and 5%.
Okay. What percentage of savings would those, what percentage of savings for individual homeowners? Because it seems to me that the difference is still a factor of how much in the model it's set to that additional conservation, that bar is set to.
Right. So the, the additional measures weren't defined as a percent difference or a percent reduction. If we go back here, this, this 20% is the additional amount of increased savings. I'd have to do the math to calculate what that would be relative to the 2% and the 5%. But, so it wasn't, there's no, no basis that's directly related to the per-unit consumption, if that makes sense.
Deputy Council President Batis.
I just had a couple of questions. So that Cascade's goal setting is in 2019, during 2019, and then to roll out a new plan in 2020?
I don't know if they've stipulated exactly what that schedule is. Megan or David, do you know if they've set a formal schedule for that? When we talk with Cascade staff, all I know is that they intend to initiate that process in 2019.
And then the tracking per household would go on in the recommendation that you have, the tracking per household and the trends would, that's something that we could evaluate as we're also hearing about what Cascade comes up with, with their, their new goal, goals in 2019.
Yeah, exactly. And the point there, too, is that the annual reporting that is done relative to Cascade's goal, you know, that's on a regional basis. And so having these kinds of targets that are just specific to the city, you could continue to monitor those performance metrics, if you would, you're on your own to see how you as a city are doing, not just how the region is doing.
Thank you.
I have a question. What's our capacity of storage in the system compared to the maximum daily projected? In other words, you showed, you know, getting to a point where you're whatever, 8 million gallons per day. What, what does our system store?
Well, I don't, I, do you recall a hand?
I forget the statistic, but we, we have, except for the Spar reservoir, which is on the horizon, we have adequate storage to meet the Department of Health requirements currently. And whatever central Issaquah, whenever that dictates more storage, we'll be building a reservoir on the, at the Spar site. But I can't tell you off the top of my head how that compares. Maybe Sheldon, Sheldon's doing calculations now.
Well, I see him. Adding up millions.
While he's thinking about numbers, though, it's also important to remember that while you utilize storage, and you will use more of it during peak season, you can't count on storage to support your maximum day demand. Storage is there to help you equalize and meet your peak hour demand, and then it's there for fire suppression, and it's there for emergency standby purposes. So the state requires that you have supply capacity to meet your maximum day demand. Storage not, is not a part of that equation.
Okay.
It's still instructive to know, though, how your total storage compares.
Yeah.
I'd have to, I'd have to look it up real quick.
And it would be?
If I tell you a number, I'll be wrong right now.
And then in reality, these are planning numbers. And in reality, it could be an extreme day where you do exceed the maximum day demand.
Well, if you guys were here earlier, I was talking about resilience, right? So I'm curious, from a resilience standpoint, what our system capacity is.
Sheldon.
So maybe you could give me the answer, not tonight, but next time we meet, I would be curious.
Well, and, you know, Cascade and others, as a part of the Puget Sound Regional Forum, are looking at that resiliency question. And you can look at it from very different perspectives, too, in terms of what's a minimum amount of water to sustain life for a certain amount of time. So there's different models out there. So we can provide some information on that.
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Winterstein?
If no one else has a comment, I'll, I'll go again then. You're, so I'm thinking a little bit more. You've made a lot of assumptions in this model, some of them conservative, you've described them that way. But it's based upon those assumptions that you've done a single calculation of this potential savings with the additional conservation measures. And did you look at this, did you, by chance, do like a range of estimates? I mean, you just picked one number and you projected as opposed to, you know, let's do a range, right? And, and maybe less conservative or more aggressive, what have you. We just got one numbers in there and like, you know, you know, maybe, you know, maybe, maybe the whole thing slides to the left or maybe it all slides to the right, just based upon the assumptions in the, that you've made.
Right. So in essence, what we're doing, I mean, I mean, this is a range. We've got three curves now. So you've got the baseline, that is very conservative, right? That's this high number?
That is very conservative.
And, well, it's conservative. Conservative in the sense that from a water supply planning perspective, it's conservative, yes. Yeah. And then we've constructed to inform a range.
It's conservative because, could you finish the sentence?
It's conservative because it is assuming future development is using water at a higher rate than what we most recently observed it to be using in 2016. But we do that because to construct kind of that high end of a potential range in the future, we want to construct a higher end because we don't want to come in and underestimate demands and, and reach a supply deficiency situation sooner than planned for.
Yeah. So when it comes to budgeting and estimating, I understand.
Sure.
That you, you, you have different approaches and, just like you estimate your expenses high and your revenues low.
Right.
A, okay. Next time we get together on this, I may have some more thoughts.
Sure.
But not more at the moment.
Sure.
Any other questions or comment? By once, twice, anything more? All right. With that, this meeting is adjourned. Next council meeting is next, Monday night at 7:00 PM here in Chambers, regular council meeting. Thank you.